Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here from downtown beautiful Westphal.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Here.
Mr. Miskowski?
Here, and apologize for not gabbling the meeting in, but I think if Aaron heard me banging on this dining room table, I'd have to leave early. All right, so if everyone would please remain silent for a moment of silence, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll begin the pledge. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag.
To the Republic One Nation Under God Indivisible With liberty
Justice
Thank you. All right, review and adoption of the meeting agenda. I haven't seen any amendments come out, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
I fear we've lost him, so let's move on to the
Lost him.
Individual.
Mr. Morin?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
And gentlemen, can he see a message? Somebody want to put something up?
He just came back. Well, now he's gone again.
Okay.
Let's give him just a minute to try to get back in.
Any frozen precip on your end of the county there? Bill?
No, sir. A little flurries last night, but not a whole lot. But it was neat seeing for the first time I remember this year, we may have got a little bit before, but I didn't remember it.
Yeah, we had some flurries at some point, but I missed them. It was
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I did just send out a me- this is Travis Wolf. I did just send out a meeting, sorry, a message in the Zoom meeting. If you would like to speak during the public speaking portion, to send me a message through the chat. And I will send you the unmute option during that time. Thank you.
Okay. I know we've had one request, but anybody else that wishes to speak, now's a good time to go ahead and take advantage of get yourself on that list that Mr. Wolf knows that you desire to speak. We're just going to give, do we have any indication that Stuart's making an attempt to get back on? Is he calling in or anything?
Let me see if I can call him while we're sitting here.
He said he had it on the phone too, but I don't see his number.
I see his landline.
I do too, but it's muted.
Yeah, unmute that landline.
Which one?
0030.
Yeah, 769-0030.
And his cell goes straight to voicemail.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
There he is.
Loud and clear.
All right, I am sorry about this, but I'm not going to have video.
No, it's all good. We understand completely.
Yup, yup. Y'all don't need to see me anyway, right?
So okay, so we hit the pause button, Stuart, so we did adopt the meeting agenda.
Okay.
A comment now, if you're ready, we'll go ahead and resume.
Yeah, let's, let's go.
Okay, so a public comment period, one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're representing a group on non-public hearing matters. Please state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin, and if you are speaking on behalf of the group, please say so before you begin speaking. We'll go ahead and open the public comment period now. If you do wish to speak, please reach out in the chat to Mr. Wolf so he can offer you the option to unmute. We'll go ahead and open the public comment period.
Good evening. I'm Mary C. Bancroft, and I'm in District Five in Alitt off West River Road. I think the most, most of you all know that I am running for treasurer. We are a week out tomorrow. I have had a lot of meet and greets. They've gone very well. I've met some wonderful, wonderful folks who have pledged great support for me, and that just humbles me to no end. I just, I'm just so honored that all the folks have come out and spoken to me and let me know that they are fully supporting me. I do have a friend who was a former treasurer of Northern Virginia County, and I've been in contact with him, and he's been giving me a great deal of knowledge as well. So I feel like that's going to really benefit me. I'm feeling confident, and I can't wait. I'm eager and just ready to roll my sleeves up if things go the way I'm hoping that they'll go. But I just want to let you all know, I'm just so anxious and, and just really working very hard for this. And just go vote, and I'm sure most of you know, but please go vote on Tuesday if you've not already done so. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, and thank you for the useful reminder of that special election that we do have coming up on, on the second. Is there anyone else?
I do not have anyone.
Not seeing anybody popping up in the chat requesting it. We've given ample time for that to happen, so I'm going to go ahead and do one last call. And I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. All right, next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? If there is none, Ms. Lawrence, please call her all.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Morin?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
And, Mr. Chair, I forgot what all is in there. Just to, and I don't know if it's anyone there to answer my question. And I should have done it before. It would have been in discussion, but the erroneous assessments, the vets, had they applied or not applied, what was the, do we know the deal there? Apply, they were overlooked?
It, no, I don't know how they reached that, that particular remedy. But, you know, it would appear that everything was in order and it was duly owed to them, but I don't know why it was discovered after the fact.
That's what I'm getting at, the after the fact.
Okay. I don't see her on here.
One of them, one of the disabled vets, it states, it actually states on there as of January 2020. So that's pretty recent. I know it's another one that I can't find right now, but I know that one is.
Yeah, there's three refunds to vets.
Yeah.
So as with Bill's question or comment, I'd like to have that ready for the new COR to determine what the process is. Is there a checklist? Is it well advertised so we don't let this slip through?
Another good reason to go vote in the special election. Okay, with that done, we are moving on to eight, which is presentations. We do have a presentation on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The CAFR, Tasciener, do we have a representative from RFC?
Yes, sir. It's Ann Wall with Robinson Farmer Cox.
All right, I will turn it over to her.
Very good. Thank you so much. I'm Ann Wall with Robinson Farmer Cox. Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Very good. I'm a partner in the Richmond office of Robinson Farmer Cox, and I was here during the field work. I was about the report writing process, and I am very pleased to be here at this date to present this audit. 2020 just overall was a very challenging year for local governments, for local government auditors. And then to compound that, this was our first year of a, of a new contract, so it was a transition year. And certainly new auditors, there's a learning curve to determine how King William County operates. So more than pleased that we were able to get this audit completed on a timely basis, given all the parameters. Local governments are required to have an annual audit conducted each year. It's required by the Code of Virginia. It's required by the Uniform Guidance and the Single Audit Act that governs your federal program dollars, and it's certainly a good business practice. We were here for the audit, for the actual field work. In the months of June and July, we came, we did separate visits at the county and then at the school board. And then we came back for a full week in October, the week of October 5th, to complete the audit. And we appreciate everybody's flexibility in allowing us to come in, into their offices, and we followed the health and safety protocols at the time. The audit report is a comprehensive report or comprehensive document. It's 164 pages. And in addition to that, there's an introductory section. It's also a comprehensive audit and includes the, the finance department is typically our main point of contact with the treasurer's office, the school board, social services, county administration, to name a few other departments that are a part of this audit. Want to report to you that staff assisted with the report preparation to include the management's discussion and analysis. That's really at the front of the report. It's on pages 4A through 4N. And it provides really an overview and actually a lot of very specific information and analysis comparing this year to last year. I have prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation, which I believe we have up in front of us. And we'll move on to the, to the second slide, which is really just an overview of my discussion and kind of what we're going to talk about. I'm going to go through the engagement summary, which is basically what you hired us to do. We're going to go through the results of the audit, some other reporting requirements. We did issue a management letter. I'm going to kind of go through that at a high level. And then there, I have a fund balance summary slide and just a little bit of other financial reporting information that we'll review. In terms of the, next slide, please, the engagement summary. You engaged us, we use that word, but really you hired us to perform a financial statement audit, audit and to issue compliance reports for the year ended June 30, 2020. Local government audits are subject to much, much regulation. Your audit was subject to the generally accepted auditing standards, the audit specifications that are prepared by the auditor of public accounts for counties, cities and towns. The standards for financial audits contained in government auditing standards, and then the Single Audit Act and the Uniform Guidance. Those two latter ones really govern your federal program dollars. But all of these regulatory groups really drive the field work that we do, the questions that we ask, you know, the audit test, the form and content of the audit report that you have in front of you to include how our opinions are labeled and worded. Next slide. Now we're on to the, the results of the audit. I'm pleased to report that we expressed unmodified opinion on each of the following. An unmodified opinion, it used to be called an unqualified opinion, but an unmodified opinion is the best opinion. It's a clean opinion. And so that's what you're, what you're striving for. The first bullet is the unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2020. That opinion's located on the first three pages of the report. And why is it there? Because I think that's the most, most important part, that the financial statements are materially correct. That's just the wording that, that accountants use, but that was based on the substantive work that we did when we were there in the county. We did propose material adjusting entries to the books, and they have been posted. And so the county's financial statements, your internal financial statements mirror the fund statements that are in this audit report. The other unmodified opinion or report that we issued, that second bullet there, the compliance opinion for major programs. And again, this is the federal program dollars. That opinion is on pages 154 and 155. Since the county receives and expends federal program dollars each year, if you expend over $750,000 in a year, you're required to get a single audit. And then there's certain programs each year that are tested as type A or major federal programs. And there's a risk-based approach to determine which ones to test, but essentially, generally, it's your bigger programs that would have the higher dollar value risk. But there's some smaller programs that are required to be audited as well. This year, we audited school food and special education, which both, both of those are managed over at the school board. And then the SNAP program, the State Nutrition Assistance Program, which is run out of the Social Services Department. There's very specific federal program testing requirements. And again, we were able to issue a clean, unmodified opinion on pages 154 and 155 related to that. The next bullet, we expressed a modified opinion on the following. Internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters for the year ended June 30, 2020. That opinion's on pages 152 and 153, and it's truly consistent with the opinion that you received last year. We reported two material weaknesses over financial reporting, and those are on pages 160 and 161 of the audit report. And they're related to the, the material entries, journal entries that we had to propose. You know, as auditors, if we identify material adjustments to the financial statements that you are not able to detect, it indicates that there's a material weakness. And so there were material adjustments related to beginning fund balance, accounts receivable, payables, fund balance, cash and long-term debt. But they have been identified, and the finance department and the school board concurred with the adjustments that we proposed, and they have been posted. In addition, there was a second material weakness, and this was one related to the treasurer's office. And it was one that was reported last year, and it had to do with segregation of duties. And I want to tell you that once a, once an item gets reported as a material weakness in your financial statements, you know, it's going to stay there until it's been corrected. So your prior auditors identified this as a material weakness. And so we, again, had to evaluate that and continue to report the lack of segregation of duties in the, in the treasurer's office as a material weakness. But it really has to do with staffing. There's a very small staff in the treasurer's office, and it doesn't allow for but so much segregation of duties. But one of the things we very specifically recommend would be to allow the county finance director to review and visibly approve the monthly bank reconciliations. I think that would allow for a limited segregation of duties. The bank reconciliation process is really one of the key fiscal duties that the treasurer's office does. And if that were reviewed outside of the treasurer's office and to ensure that the reconciling items are materially correct and that the reconciliations agree to the, to the county's general ledger, I think that would help alleviate that segregation of duties, material weakness that's been reported for the last couple of years. Other audit results we're required to do to test a lot of the census data related to the Virginia retirement items that are reported to the Virginia retirement system, and that was all materially correct. There were no findings related to that. Next slide, please. The county's annual financial report is also required to be reported, to be submitted to the auditor of public accounts along with the annual comparative cost report forms and an agreed upon procedures opinion that we issued, and that was a clean opinion. And those forms are due December 15th. And your report was submitted on a timely basis. The due date used to be November 30th, you might recall, probably for the last 30 some years, the due date has been November 30th. But the General Assembly permanently amended the reporting deadline to December 15th. Not even related to the pandemic. The General Assembly did that in February of 2020 before, before that occurred. And then that second bullet on this screen. Once this report has been presented to the Board of Supervisors, as we're doing this evening, localities are required to submit a notarized statement from the chief elected official and chief administrative officer to the auditor of public accounts, really certifying that the, the results of the audit have been presented to the board. Next slide, please. And then the other reporting requirement, and this is something that I'm still working on with the finance director. We need to submit this report to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. And again, because you have the material weaknesses reported, corrective action plan has to be submitted along with the forms and a copy of the audit report. But the due date on that is not till March 31st. Next slide, please. Where we are now is just some recommendations included in the management letter. A management letter is something that we issue outside of the, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So any items in a management letter are not material weaknesses. They're not significant deficiencies. They're just based on the work that we did, some internal control recommendations generally that we would recommend. We, I did review these. I had an exit meeting with the county administrator and the county finance director, and we reviewed, they were still in draft form, but reviewed these comments. And then separately, I went and met with the school finance director and reviewed the ones that were related to the school board. That first bullet, in addition to the management letter, there actually, there was a compliance finding reported on page 162. And again, this is consistent with last year. There's certain policy updates that are required by the Uniform Guidance in the areas. And it's just of conflict of interest, cash management, procurement, allowability of cost. And again, it's, it's not a compliance issue. It's just the federal government thinks that if you receive and expend over $750,000 in federal money, that you should have these very specific policies in place. And you're not alone not having them written policies in place, but again, it's our job to recommend that these things get written. In addition, in the management letter, and again, I'm not going to review it in great detail, there were some other policy updates. We recommended the investment policy that the county has. It hasn't been updated since 2004. General ledger and financial reporting. The county, the county's general fund, there's several funds that are merged together for financial reporting. They're separate in the county's general ledger, but for financial reporting, they're merged together, and, and that's perfectly appropriate. Many counties do that. But there's two funds that are merged in with the general fund, the enter, that are enterprise funds, the water fund and the sewer fund for financial reporting. Those are both merged into the general fund. And again, I spoke with the county finance director, and I think she concurs with this, but these two funds should really be reported as business-type activities in the county's annual financial report for FY21. Business-type activities account for operations that are financed similar to a business enterprise. The complexity associated with that is that adjustments will need to be made to the beginning fund balance net position to reflect water and sewer fixed assets. Any of the county's long-term debt that's related to those has to be carried within the fund and some other kind of very specific crew leave adjustments and interest payable and that kind of thing. So again, it's, 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 there's more to it than just separating the audit report. There's a process involved that probably needs to begin prior to the FY21 year end. There were some very specific requirement, items that we noted related to the school board. And again, I reviewed those with the school finance director. One of them had to do with school federal program drawdowns not being on a, a timely basis. Rev, local revenue transmittal forms. When funds are received directly at the school board, then they're transmitted over to the treasurer's office. Those weren't being done as timely as, as we would like to see. And there were other policy recommendations specific to school board accounting. We also reviewed social services, and there's also some very specific recommendations just relative to, to the way they operate and kind of some best practices that we put in writing for them and reviewed it with them as well. And then in the treasurer's office, there were also some specific recommendations relative to the segregation of duties. Improving some physical security in the treasurer's office, cross-training, and then just some real specific recommendations relative to the bank reconciliation and some items that were over a year old that were being carried as reconciling items. I know I'm covering a lot of material, but I just kind of, kind of want to get through it, and then if you here. And then finally, as part of the audit this year, we did an information technology review. We don't typically do this every year, but since this was our first year of the audit of, of your audit, we had our IT specialist meet with your, I think he's called the systems engineer, but essentially your IT director, and really just review procedures and policies and things that you had in place relative to information technology. And most of the recommendations that came out of that were also related to updating or drafting written policies. You know, policies established of uniformity of a process, and they document the process. So if there's any turnover in staffing, that if certain things are documented, then kind of know how, how it works. But currently, the county does not have a, I say currently, this field work was not on July 1st, 2020. So these recommendations were as of July 1, 2020. The county didn't have a written security policy. County didn't have a written password policy in place for all employees. There were some backup and restoration procedures that weren't documented. There's no written disaster recovery plan for the county. And then in addition, our IT specialists recommended that there's currently no information technology steering committee or regu, that has regular meetings or having regular meetings with department heads to ensure that IT aligns with the county's objectives. And again, we will follow up on these matters and all these matters at the, at your next audit, on the FY21 audit, and report back to you of, you know, corrective action in place, or if we still see that that there still needs to be some improvement in any of these areas. Next slide, please. I only have two more. This slide really is just a fund balance summary. I kind of pulled it from exhibit five, which is on page nine, and it just details your fund balances. That first, first row is your fund balances this time last year at June 30, 2019. And then the, the spot in the middle is the change, and then the ending fund balance is the, is the third line there. Your general fund, which is that first fund, your fund balance increased $706,657. Kind of keep in mind that the general fund for financial reporting has several funds merged together. So again, that's not just the general fund, the water and the sewer fund and various other funds are merged in there with the general fund. The county capital projects fund, again, that fund balance increased, you know, $4,071,830. But that increase was due to debt this year. I think the county issued debt on December 1st, 2019 to purchase some Motorola communications equipment. And I think as of June 30, 2020, those funds had not been expended. Last slide, please. The last slide, it really is just, if I were to draw your attention to any just real specific exhibits in the, in the actual 160-some page audit report. Exhibit eight on page 75 details the actual versus budget for the general fund. I think it's interesting to look at that, see where you were compared to your original budget and then your adjusted budget. Exhibit nine on page 76, and that's an actual versus budget for the new CARES Act fund that the county established. The CARES Act fund was established in FY20 as a special revenue fund, and it actually is reporting a cash balance at the end of the year of $1.2 million in unearned revenue of about the same. Those funds, any unexpended funds at June 30 were deferred. Typically, federal funds are not receded in advance, so these CARES Act money was, was different than, generally, they're reimbursement-based. But these funds, just in order to get them out to localities to expend, were really advanced to you. And so at June 30, And so at June 30, the county had only expended a small piece of that first installment. I'm sure the board's very aware that the county received two installments of about $1.5 million each, one on June 1 and one on, in August of 2020. The CARES Act Fund will be audited as a Type A major federal program in FY '21 just due to the high dollar value that will have been expended in FY '21. And then in addition, kind of relative to the CARES Act and COVID, there's a new footnote in the report this year that discusses subsequent events, and very specifically the pandemic, COVID-19, economic uncertainties, and the CARES Act funding that the county received. And that's in Note 21 in your audit report. That concludes my prepared comments relative to the FY '20 audit report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Ms. Wall.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hear me okay?
Something, something's going on with the audio.
Test one.
Right now, she's muted her mic, I think that might help it.
Test one, okay. Hey, Ms. Wall, is it, or anyone? This is my second CAFER. So is there any, this, this thing closed out on 30 June, correct? The, the information that went into this report is closed out on 30 June.
Well, let me answer that. Yes, so it's a June 30 year-end, but the county's on a modified accrual basis. So there are, in July and August, you know, anything that came in that was related to June, if some meals tax money or taxes receivable, if any of those things that were related to June 30th or prior, those have been accrued back. And kind of the same thing with expenditures, any accounts payable, any items that are paid in July and August that the bill date might be in June or May, or the services rendered, if they were in May or June, those are accrued back also. So it's not quite as clean as just that June 30 because it's not a cash basis presentation.
At least to my question, is there any such thing as a supplement to the CAFER? Is it, is it in a six-month maybe that there's a supplement to this to update it and keep it as up-to-date as possible with latest information? Is that, is that something you've ever seen?
Yes, sir.
Or Ms. Tassinari or anybody there? Is that something that has ever been done?
This is my tenth, I've never seen anybody try to update it. I mean, this is a monumental undertaking, really, you know, on an annual basis. Anything that I, I think isn't captured by the time that the report comes out, you know, is going to get captured in the, in the following closeout of the, of the next fiscal year. I think it would be probably, A, I don't think it's precedent, and B, I don't know that it would, it would, I don't know how practical it would be to even attempt.
In here, sorry.
So basically, the, the agreement of those of us that have been doing this for a while is it wouldn't necessarily be possible, appropriate, or worth the attempt? Is there anything specific that you're worried about?
Things like the CARES funding, the fact that we're getting new officers, and they're gonna have to clean up or answer the mail for the deficiencies. So as, to be able to track these and ensure that they are read into the official record, so forth and so on, is, without that, we won't see this again until next January, correct? Okay. Okay.
We're having a hard time hearing you on our end, at least on my end.
Mr. Chair, can, can y'all hear me? I have been, I've dropped the call twice. So I missed, I missed a chunk of it, but anyway, for me, under findings, federal award findings, basically, it's exceeded appropriations. Do we have a number on, on the amount of money that we exceeded? There was a 2019 finding that was continued, I guess. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'm trying to.
Page number reference, Mr. Garber, might be helpful.
I can't, I can't hear you now. This will be on page 164. Can you hear that?
Yeah, we got you, we got you, they're looking at.
Okay. Sorry about all this.
Well, I, I want to just speak to what I know. On page 164, that 2019-004 finding.
Yeah.
Again, part of what we have to do in the audit report is report the prior year findings and determine if there's corrective action in place. So we, that, the status of that one was corrective action in place, and we didn't note any excess expenditures over appropriations in FY '20.
Okay, so basically, over appropriation to the, the School Board in FY '20, it wasn't?
Yes, sir.
Y'all have been doing the CAFER reports for how many years?
This is our first year, this was a transition year. So I guess Brown Edwards had been your auditors. I don't know if it was the last five years or how long it was, but FY '20 is our first year.
Do you have any knowledge of whether the previous CAFER reports were, ever threw up a red flag for over appropriation to the schools?
Well, I mean, I concur with the comment that you're looking at that was reported in FY '19. It was talking about county expenditures and School Board expenditures exceeded budgeted appropriations in various categories.
Right. So that wouldn't necessarily all be in the Treasurers Office, correct? That would be the School Board?
It would be the, the School Board, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Are, are you saying that it exceeded what was appropriated or just exceeded certain categories?
Again, this was an FY '19 finding that was reported by your prior auditors, by Brown Edwards. But they noted that School Board expenditures exceeded budgeted appropriations in certain lines like instruction, pupil transportation, and school food service costs. But they also reported that the county exceeded appropriations in health and welfare, parks and rec, and cultural. That's the very specific finding that they had in the 2019 audit.
That wasn't an issue with this year. We, so what happened was, so in 19, Parks and Rec, for example, when she might have received more revenue and the expenses then would go up. So what was happening in 19 is it just would post that way. That it, bottom line, we, you know, we stayed within our budget, but then exceeded some things. So this year, what we've done, and, well, I'm sorry, in FY '20, and what we currently do is when there is an adjustment for something like that, say she adds an additional program, what we do is actually do a budget adjustment to actually show what we anticipate the revenues to be, what we anticipate the expenses to be. So we keep it aligned, and by the end of the year, when you see those numbers, when the auditors are looking at it, they will see one side that says, this is what the Board approved in April. But through the year, they'll show, and then there's a second column that will say budget adjustments, and you'll be able to see how the budget, the budget was adjusted through the year for different items. And then at the, your final column will, will show you, and this is how we ended at the end of the year. So we capture any budget adjustments now.
Does that answer your question, Stuart?
Well, I think Bill asked the last part of that question, but yes.
Anybody else? All right. Ms. Wall, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Thanks for the Robinson Farmer Cox, they've always done a great job for the county when we've called on you guys. So yeah, look forward to, yeah, continuing the partnership. Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, with that, we're on to number nine, Old Business Comprehensive Plan Update by Ms. Graham. Is she on the line? Ah, she's in the building even.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to give you a brief update on what's going on with the comp plan. We have a six-member committee that have been set up in addition to the Hill staff. It consists of myself, Steve Hudgens, John Breeden, Jamie Graves, Holly McGowan, and Kenneth Holderon. So I think we have a good group there to get started. We're gonna kick off our meetings next, next week, we plan to get together. And then we'll have a work session with the Planning Commission and the Board on the 8th. Hill will be there, and they are getting a list of questions together that they would like to go over and just get your thoughts and input as we get started with this comp plan. I will let you know that everything that we're doing is on a link on our webpage, and we will update that as things get updated. Also want to give you a quick update on the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance that we're working on. All of the surveys and the flyers went out the first of last week. I know a lot of people have received them. We're getting a lot of phone calls, which is good, with questions and where to find certain information. So we've been able to get that to them. That information as well is on a link on our webpage. Tomorrow, we have the stakeholder groups that will be meeting. Berkeley Group will hold four stakeholder groups. On Thursday at 6:30, there will be a virtual public forum. So I'm hoping that we get good participation with that. The surveyors are due in by the 26th of February. Once Berkeley gets those in, they're gonna need about two weeks to compile them, and then they will come back to the Board and the Planning Commission with the results of everything. That public forum will also be taped and will be on the webpage for future viewing. If people could not meet, make it at that meeting.
Great, and I saw that link is up on the website. And I know that some people have been getting their, you know, notice to fill out the survey. I took time to fill, fill one out today, so everybody on here. Before you just kind of log off of everything tonight, if you want to take a minute, it does not take very long, go to the county website and find the survey to complete for the zoning and subdivision ordinance updates, make sure that you, you've given your input as we move through the process. Anything else, Ms. Graham?
If they don't want to mail it in, they can fill out a survey. There's a link on there as well to fill it out online.
Great.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Graham, did, to whom did these get mailed to? Everyone and the taxpayers, or is it random sample?
We have tried to reach out and mail them to everyone.
Any other board members with questions for Ms. Graham about either the comp plan update or the subdivision and zoning ordinance revisions?
Ms. Graham, these stakeholder meetings are public or private?
They're private.
Mr. Morton, if you missed, that's the answer to it, they're private.
Yeah. Will there be any minutes taken?
There will not be minutes, they will be compiling all of the information, and then they'll bring that information back to, to the Board and the Planning Commission.
Are you planning on meeting with any of the three Indian tribes in the county for their input? Specifically, or?
We haven't, but if they want to meet with us, we'll be glad to meet with them.
I think for sure, the, the two federally recognized, Pumunki and Uramatapanai should at least be on your roster. I'm sure that citizens will get the, the surveys, but you might want to look at a specific share, stakeholder meeting, or including one of the representatives on your, on your meetings.
You can certainly do that, reach out and see if they want to be a participant and give their input on everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Ms. Graham. All right, on the new business, we have an update on the Board of Equalization from Ms. Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey.
So at the time of drafting this for you all, my numbers have dramatically increased. The members were appointed by the Circuit Court on February 16th, and as of yesterday, I believe, they have all been sworn in officially. At the time of drafting this, I had received 98 requests for applications to appeal with the Board of Equalization. As of today, that has increased to 118 requests. I had made 49 completed applications. And as of today, I have received 83 completed applications. Of the 18 scheduled meetings we have, six were filled when I drafted this memo. Now 11 have been filled. I do anticipate all of these meeting dates to be filled, or at least almost all of them to be filled by the submission deadline. If that were to happen and all of them are filled and we do need more, we simply will need to create more. Everyone will need to be heard. Once someone has filled out their application and filed it with me, I then set their hearing date. And I then send them their Notice of Rights, Hearing Procedures, and Frequently Asked Questions, which I've attached in your packets. These documents will help the applicant prepare for their appeal, informs them of how the hearing may go. It tells them how they can retrieve supporting documentation, how they can get it to the Board of Equalization. And it also allows them to know what to expect from the process, since a lot of us are going through this for the first time together. Are there any questions I can answer?
Board members.
Yeah, Olivia, if, I know we've had some comments about the procedures of the Board of Equalization meetings, or, or our guidelines, are they by state statute?
What exactly are you referring?
For the individual, for the meetings and requirements, you know, to have your documentation turned in prior to the
The 15 days.
Literature about not directly addressing the assessor. I can't remember all of them, I don't have it here in front of me, but are they supported by a state statute? Because.
It would depend on what exactly you're referring to, I can't.
Ms. Lawrence, I'll go ahead, I'll, I'll fill in on the rest for you, because the complaints that we have gotten in a couple of mass emails that went, that came to us over the weekend were, they all had three specific complaints, so I'm gonna guess they're all coming from one source. But it was, they did not agree with being asked to swear an oath. They did not agree that material should have to be submitted 15 days prior to, one going so far as to say that they would not be providing material until the day of. And then the third. And then the third was, yeah, there was some talk about there's something in there, but not directly addressing the assessor during the hearing.
The assessor will not be present during the hearing unless the board has questions for him. So that won't be an issue. As far as the 15 day prior to the meeting submission deadline for documents, that's so the Board of Equalization has time to review their documents. They will need to be briefed on the hearing in order to know the case. If they don't have the documents prior to, they're not going to understand the case at all. They're going to be receiving the thing, all of the items right there in front of them and not have time to have looked up any of the evidence, any of the documentation that they've brought. It's just not feasible. That's why the Board of Equalization set the guideline of 15 days prior to the appeal hearing. I did not set that. And what was the other complaint? I apologize.
Hearing an oath.
Oh, the oath, that is something that other localities have set in their hearing procedures.
So I guess they
Mr. Carter, I guess his question.
The requirements are supported by a state statute or not?
Those three are not in state statute.
Okay, thank you.
But does state statute give the Board of Equalization the authority
Yes, they do.
To enact and enforce those measures?
Yes, they do. I've had constant contact with the State Department of Taxation, Teresa Born, and she has approved all methods we are enforcing.
So the Board of Equalization has had a meeting and they approved the guideline. I'm just trying to get this out there so people won't keep on asking these questions.
Everyone that has applied with me receives all this information.
But the question is, the Board of Equalization has approved these methods?
Right.
Yes, yes, they set most of these methods and when we set all our hearing dates.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Graham, did you have a question?
I'm still not clear on the exact, that question that Stuart asked. The Board of Equalization came up with that they had to sign the oath and that they had to turn in all their paperwork 15 days in advance. That's correct.
The 15 day prior, yes. The oath, no. Surrounding localities, that's part of their hearings procedure. That's just general hearing procedure for any Board of Equalization.
But if we didn't do it last time, why are we doing it this time?
I don't know what the Board of Equalization did last time. Neither does this board.
Travis and I should because we were on there and I don't think we had that.
Well, that wasn't on the board.
The document, the 15 day prior documentation, I don't think that was, that was a part of it either. Was it?
Do you remember Travis?
Well, I, I don't, but here's the thing. The Board of Equalization has the right to, to ask for these things and the Board of Equalization also has a duty to uphold, which is to make sure that they're holding these hearings in, in a fashion that, you know, gives everybody a fair hearing. And I think it's reasonable to say that they should be allowed time to review these, you know, the evidence before a hearing takes place. I don't know of any, you know, I don't know of any court that would admit evidence, you know, without, without prior review as well. So, you know, and as far as the swearing of the oath, I don't see why it's, why that's a big deal. You know, we're certainly, we're allowed to do it at the board level as well if we desire to. I just don't see where it's a sticking point other than, than people are trying to complain about the process. But the Board of Equalization is within its rights to ask for these things. And I'll point out again that the Board of Equalization is a circuit court, court-appointed body that is supposed to be politically independent from this board. So I would caution us against directing the Board of Equalization to take any action, you know, that they otherwise have the authority to, to take in order to do their business.
No, I was just trying to get an answer to the, like Travis said, the emails.
So the answer is that state code does not require that those things happen. However, it does grant authority to the Board of Equalization to require it on, on their own behests in order to conduct their business. And that, I think the bigger point here is that, is that a lot of the emails came across accusing our staff of making these decisions in order to somehow make it a more cumbersome process, where that is not the case. The Board of Equalization has made the decision to take up these practices in order to more efficiently and, and fairly conduct their business.
That's what I just asked and that's not what they just said. They said that the Board of Equalization came up with the 15 days, but they did not come up with the oath. Not that it makes any difference, but that's what was said.
The oath just says that they're telling the truth.
Oh, I don't care. It's just that, I'm just stating the fact that that, the Board of Equalization didn't state that.
It was precedent from other counties.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, it's fine.
Anyone else?
But as far as the 15 day, Stuart, I believe it's, it has to be set. Some cases are going to be simple, some are going to be relatively complex. So just setting a 15 day hard date had, something had to be done, so.
No, I don't have any conflict with it. It was just, the question was asked and I was just wondering if it was supported by a state statute. And Travis said that it was allowable that the Board of Equalization could make those requirements. I don't, I don't have any problems with it. I know it is a boatload of people out there that don't have the ability to do what is going to be required for them to go to the Board of Equalization. And they probably won't even file to have a hearing. That's all.
I mean, all they need to do is, is file and present evidence. They don't need to hire an attorney. They don't need to be an attorney.
Yeah, but it's a lot of people out there that they don't have the capability to do property comparisons. A lot of them don't have the ability to, to get the documentation to, you know, to support their argument. And there's a lot of them that.
Listed in the informational documents also is how they can go about obtaining all of that information.
Yes, but they still have to, they can't come in and, and into the office or whatever and say, make this case for me. They have to point you in a direction, parcel numbers. They have to, you know, nobody's going to make the case for them is what I'm saying. But I understand. I mean, it's always been this way with the Board of Equalization. You have to present evidence.
Yeah, I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel here. This is, this is a process taking place for, you know, a very long time over. My goodness, probably since the, the, you know, the most recent state constitution has been laid out this way. So I just, you know, again, as, as, as everything, as we've gone through this reassessment process, none of this is new, although it seems to be, it being presented as something that is this, this new nefarious thing we're doing. It's not. It's, it's a standard practice that we're required to do. By, you know, the state constitution really, and then statutes being birthed there from by the General Assembly. We've got to do it every so often. We've got to do it a certain way. And then this Board of Equalization process has to be adhered to as well. So it's just, it's, it's the same thing we've been doing. You know, and, and it, Ms. Lawrence, I think, has done everything that she can to make it as accessible and user-friendly as possible, especially given the, the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, you know, not being able to have many people in the office looking maybe at physical things. But, you know, I, I think our staff's done an excellent job with this. The volume of, of appeals is quite, you know, it's staggering. And so I'd be interested to see how this, this comes out in the end. Because again, I've been looking at this for, you know, a couple of months now and I can't find anything material in this reassessment that's wrong. I think people are shocked by the percentage amount. I think that the communication that we are going to be equalizing the rate is being drowned out by people who are trying to beat the drum of the, the, making people concerned about the percentage number on the assessment rather than the fact of the, of what the tax rate's going to actually be next year. And I think once we get through with this, I think we'll have a good product. I think we'll have, for the first time, probably since I've been on the board, accurate assessment values, a tax rate that is based on reality and something that we can then use to, to, to plan and, and try to get some consistency in here moving forward. That's, that's my thought on the matter.
Mr. Chair, also the circuit court land records are open every day if it isn't a holiday. So you can search any of the items that are being filed.
I, I mean, we're doing everything except hire an attorney for them at this point. I mean, we, we can't make it any easier, I don't think. Anyone else wish to speak on it before we move on? Okay. To me is Resolution 2106, appreciation of the Upper Matapanai Tribe, Ms. Tascinari.
Gentlemen, as you're aware, King William County and the Upper Matapanai Indian Tribe own adjacent properties on Highway 360. The Upper Matapanai Indian Tribe purchased the old doctor's office and is turning it into a medical clinic. And our building, which was the old pharmacy and dentist's office, is now a satellite sheriff's office and the community center. The Upper Matapanai Indian Tribe had previously offered to go ahead and take care of the milling and paving of the adjoining parking area between the two buildings as a donation to the county. And it was accepted by the board September 28th, 2020 in Resolution 2055. Through the course of doing the milling and paving, the Upper Matapanai realized that there was going to require additional work and additional funds. And since they had already agreed to the donation, they just would like us to acknowledge in this new Resolution 2106 that there is an additional $23,964.54 totaling the total donation to the county for the parking area of $41,914.54. And this is to acknowledge the gift and the increased dollar amount.
And I know we have Mr. Tuppence on the line. Did you have anything that you wanted to add? If you want to raise your hand in the chat or anything?
Mr. Chair, thank you. On behalf of the Upper Matapanai Tribe, I bring greetings. As Ms. Tascinari explained, we did get into the milling and repaving and during that process, our contractor realized that there was grading issues between the two buildings. And if we had proceeded, we would have, the parking lot would have continued to have issues moving into the future. So the tribe elected to go ahead and, go ahead and complete the, the grading work to correct the drainage issues that were on, on the property. And we are happy to have made the donation to the county of the $41,914.54. And we look forward to working with the county in the future with other various projects. Whereas the Upper Matapanai Tribe will receive assistance in funding from the federal government that can be used for various infrastructure projects. And we're excited to work in conjunction with the county as a sovereign nation to lay out and determine what those potential projects could be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, and certainly on behalf of the board, thank you and thank tribal leadership for, for their work on this. You know, it's pretty impressive what you guys have going on up there and we look forward to what's next. If there is no objection, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2106.
Second.
I'll second it.
Good bill of motion. Stephen, the second works for me. Discussion?
Either way.
Yep. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Morton?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Tennessee is parcel for new water tower location for the Central Garage Water System. Mr. Hudgens, who has the ESPN correspondence background.
Thank you. As you might remember, a new storage tank, elevated storage tank for their, the Central Garage Water System was identified as a primary project to be completed by 2025. And I just wanted to make you aware of where we are in that we are moving towards locating an exact site for that water tower as we, the county, move towards requesting a bond for utility projects. Mass Utility Plan showed a number of sites, four sites that were evaluated as to which one might be the best for a water tower. We looked at where development is planned on going and then a road. One in Manquinn area, the industrial park, and then where potential development on Kelly Lane is located. And the plan's evaluation showed that the Kelly Lane site would be the ideal location to its elevation as well as its proximity to existing and future growth. And it's perfect if the county does move towards including the industrial park, looping that industrial park water system in, it would serve both locations. So before the plan, we touched base with that property owner to see if he would be amenable. Mr. Kellum would be amenable to donating some property for a water tower location. He was, and just two weeks ago, Ms. Graham and I spoke with him again and he remains of the same mind that he would donate land on this property. We have not walked the site yet. We're still evaluating exactly the location. I did do a drive-by and I would have been out there already had I not been quarantined. And we're proposing a site along the northwest edge of the property due to its proximity to where the new water main will go as well as elevation. But I am set to meet Mr. Kellum out there later to walk it and do some more evaluating. Ultimately, we just want to make sure you're aware of this and to, we, we seek your approval in this direction. There's a number of unknowns that we need to lock down as we move towards requesting a bond and locating the site for this tower is a big one. Do you have any questions?
Board members.
And when he, when he's saying approval, he doesn't mean approval for the whole project just to go ahead with what he's doing now, correct?
Correct.
Why don't you go ahead and, and spell out specifically what you are asking for our approval for?
I am asking your approval to continue in this direction, to locate the exact parcel and your approval that we can locate an exact parcel on this property.
Mr. Hudson, does this not have to go through a public, as in communications towers, go through public comment and survey and make sure they approve and agree? And all that is the same?
I don't believe it's the same when we're accepting a property. If we were to give it away, we would have to go through more process. But even then, we're not at the point where we're accepting this exact piece of property. I'm just trying to get your approval that this is, you're amenable to us moving forward with this.
So you're looking, looking for approval, not necessarily for this particular parcel, but you're looking for approval to find the ideal. This, you know, when you get out there, this may not be. So you're looking for.
this, you know, when you get out there, this may not be. So you're looking for approval to move forward, not necessarily for this particular parcel.
I would like your approval to move forward with this parcel, but also know that evaluation is continuing in that we aren't set in stone to do this. If anything comes up, anything changes, we haven't made any agreements. We're not making an agreement now. But I would like your approval if this is the ideal location to move forward with surveying, et cetera.
Mr. Chair, I would like to see a fair market value of the proposed, whether it's one acre, acre and a half, two acres, fair market value of that property with the option to perhaps purchase in lieu of gifting.
Well, I think that would probably be an appropriate step once we're further along. I don't think they even have
Once it's locked in.
What we, what what they're looking for, I'm trying to pin down exactly what we're so I I think what 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 the board, if if I can go ahead and just try to get everybody's thoughts together so we can, we can take an action here, is comfortable saying that you can, you can move forward with assessing the site, assessing this parcel overall to try to find the ideal location and to see if there is an ideal location on this particular parcel. And and go as far to, once you identify one, to go ahead and survey the lot so that you have, you know, clearly identified for size, geography, all those other things that we need to know. But that we would obviously, it would need to come back to us before we accepted anything, assigned any value to anything. Those types of things, we obviously the board wants to reserve the right to make that decision before anything else happens. And I think that's what you were presenting tonight. I just want to make it clear what we're, what we're taking action on.
Yes.
That's, that's what you're looking for?
Yes, not, we're accepting a gift tonight. This is just, this is a good location, probable location. Can we move forward with looking at it?
Okay, I just wanted to make it crystal clear for the board, for the minutes, for everybody on that, you know, what we're approving tonight. So is there anybody on the board that would object to that being what we are approving? And if there is not, I will accept a motion to advise staff to move forward with what we have just agreed on.
Second.
Very good.
We need a second.
We've got it. Mr. Moore and Mr. Moore with the Mr. Hodges with the second is how I have it. All right, discussion. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
All right, next we have resolution twenty one oh seven, amend the FY twenty one capital fund budget. Ms. Journalin, Director of Finance.
Tonight, resolution twenty one dash oh seven is presented to the board for consideration to reappropriate capital improvement plan balances at year end twenty twenty. We have a balance of six hundred thirty three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars from prior year's capital fund balance that I would like to request be reappropriated to spend in fiscal year twenty twenty one. Included in tonight's agenda packet is a summary of the capital needs projects to act to allocate these funds. And the summary page is on page three oh five of the agenda. And is there any questions? The funds that are being brought forward are just simply the amounts that were appropriated in prior years budgets that have not been expended.
Natasha, I have a question. Item two. For year twenty twenty resolution nineteen seventy two, Town of West Point Pavilion.
Yes.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, I guess it was ninety nine thousand, seven thirty one expensed. That one fifty that's left. They have, they finished that project, correct? This is just money that we are going to reappropriate somewhere else, correct?
That's right. Yes. That's all it is, is we've already spent that. We paid the town. We've reimbursed the town for those funds. But as we were discussing earlier in the the meeting with Ann Wall, what we need to do now is actually then adjust our capital budget to include this, these funds moving forward. So we're not spending more than what we were budgeted.
That was part of the meeting that I missed when I was struggling trying to get back on the phone. Okay.
Okay, so to be clear, we're not, we don't owe the Town of West Point a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, we do not. That was paid. And and honestly, a lot of these things, the Town of West Point, the financial software. Let's see. There's a few of these items that were paid as Ann was discussing, you know, how we we are a modified accrual. Those things were paid maybe in August, but what the auditors have instructed us is that unless that project was fulfilled in that fiscal year, we cannot accrue that expense. So this is why we have to actually then come to you and say, it wasn't spent in fiscal twenties budget. We didn't have the product and the project wasn't finished. So now we have to ask for the funds to be spent in twenty one.
And that would be as as yet not determined, correct?
Is that, I'm sorry?
We haven't determined how we would spend that six thirty, six hundred thirty three thousand, incorrect?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I I've got a question, and Mr. McRoberts might need to chime in here. Now, we're doing a budget amendment in the total of six hundred and thirty three thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars and some change here. Now, as as I recall it, I think state code requires some extra steps if going to be amending the budget by an amount that's greater than one percent of the adopted budget. Are we, do we need to take those extra steps to be in compliance with the action that we're proposing here?
Well, you're right on the law, Mr. Muskowski, but I don't know whether this exceeds one percent or not.
I just did, I mean, at one percent of what I figured was about twenty five million, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And we did not do a public hearing last year. And then we're kind of following suit as what we did last year also when coming to you at February, March requesting this.
Yeah, it's it's not uncommon to have a bunch of these things all saved up and presented all at one time. You know, but if it does exceed one percent, it does need to have a public hearing just to advise the public about what's going on. It's not like these things aren't already. Yeah.
Mr. McRoberts, um, question about that, the majority of these, these funds have already been appropriated in prior years. They just haven't been spent in those fiscal years.
Right, right. But if they're not in this budget, they need to be placed there. That's all.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're doing. Yeah.
Well, and the reason that I just, I just thought of it, otherwise I would have brought it to your attention earlier is because of the conversation we had about the CAFER with having to do the budget amendments in order to capture the the change in expenditures. And that's when it popped into my head, okay, well, then if that's what we're doing, then we're, you know, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with this. Now, I guess one reading of this could be that although the amount is six hundred and thirty three thousand dollars, the the individual appropriations that we are changing, none of them exceed that amount. But but I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're in compliance and with kind of the 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 way of thinking about it changing, at least in my understanding of it, the way we discussed it in the CAFER talks, that's what made me think of it as as we were approaching it here.
Well, here, here's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman. Let me take a look at this with staff, you know, tomorrow, next day. And then if it does need a public hearing, we can certainly bring it back to the board at its next meeting for a public hearing.
Good.
With apologies to staff, is that going to mess y'all up? I mean, that that's just, again, I just thought of it as we were talking about everything.
Well, and to be quite honest, like I said, there are some of those items that have already been spent, which would, they are, they would be within the one percent. So I would then just go to Bobby and say, as the county administrator, she can approve that as long as it's in within that one percent without coming to the board, too. I believe that's how it.
No, I don't. Is that the case? I think it's just the one percent keeps us from having to do a public hearing when we do a budget amendment.
I think it depends upon what the board's policies say on that.
Basically, the auditors brought this to our attention last year that we were carrying capital funds from prior appropriations in previous years and that we needed to just keep, you know, make sure that we were advising the board on the amount that was remaining in the capital fund that had not been expended and roll it forward. So Natasha brought it to the board last year and moved forward all of those funds. But what you've got here is say, the historical complex is the first line, the balances of six thirty was fifty seven nine. And so that is the balance that hasn't been used that is going to, we're asking to roll forward. But you're correct. I mean, if we are, it's five hundred thousand or one percent of the operational. Some of these, though, are already expended. They were just expended after the June thirty, but they were accrued to fiscal year twenty, correct?
No, the auditors would not allow us to accrue it.
Okay, so they were appropriated in twenty, and we went ahead and either performed the service or acquired the equipment or whatever it was, software. But we did not receive the final payment until twenty one, and that's what some of these are, like the financial software, the thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty three. So what we'll do is we'll work with Mr. McRoberts, and if he feels after we fully just, you know, explain all of these different categories to him that we do need to do a public hearing, we'll bring that back to the board on the probably the twenty second. Just give us enough time, I believe, to do the public hearing in the public.
Yeah, yeah, the statute only says once, it needs to be advertised once, seven days before the public hearing, so.
But let us talk to Mr. McRoberts, and then Natasha will correspond with y'all probably after tomorrow as to what the determination is.
I just, you know, I remember doing it last year, and I remember again, the justification being that it was already appropriated funds and they could roll over, and that's, that's fine, and under that justification, I have no problem with it, but I don't want to create another compliance issue after we've solved a compliance issue. You follow, we've, we're amending the budget as we go to capture the things. I don't, they want to do a, you know, a six hundred thousand dollar budget amendment that's not in compliance, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think Ms. Tasciener is correct. We we move it forward and just put it on.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think Stephen asked, which?
I was just wondering, Mr. Chair, should we just table this?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do a motion to table.
I'll make a motion that we, that we table.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Garber and Mr. Greenwood, any discussion?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
All right, board information from the packet. Ms. Tasciener, anything you want to highlight?
No, the packet pretty much speaks for itself, but I did want to ask the chair, if you would allow me to have Chief Reeves report very, very briefly on the vaccination process. It's changing daily. And I thought that it might be a good idea to have him brief you for about two or three minutes.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Reeves. Chief Reeves, I'm sorry.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I get my stuff to work here. I apologize. So the Office of E, I'm sorry, the Department of Health is struggling with the folks from the organizations that manage them, the availability of vaccine, and they're planning to distribute vaccinations is changing almost daily, depending on what the federal government and the CDC recommends, or the control is basically in this tier, the federal government owns all the vaccines. The CDC determines how many go where. And then our health department organizes the dissemination and the endpoints for the vaccinations based on the recommendations from the CDC and federal government. So with all those things twisted together, and then the vaccinations becoming, there's actually a shortage, if you guys haven't seen that they have made public now on the actual vaccinations. So the plan that they had going out was then changed. So as recently as Friday, the even the internal workings of the planning process has had to change. So they changed from doing groups of vaccinations at one time. Say a group of people, you have locality with this number of people coming in, and we're going to have a clinic here. All these folks that have said they're going to come can come here and get this vaccination. The vaccinations are now so limited that they're only taking appointments. They've changed their process from groups of folks in clinics back down to you need to call, put your name in the pot, and then they'll call you back based on all your information. On Friday, they redacted the the sign in for your information on the Three Rivers site on the Virginia Department of Health website. And had everybody only calling a eight oh four number to register to wait for a callback. Today, they reissued another website that you can go in and put in your information if you fall into one B in the tier. And there's also a link on the Virginia Department of Health website under Three Rivers that you can click on to find out which tier you fall under. And they're, they're reaching out to these people who are signing up either via the phone number or the website and scheduling their vaccinations. They're not, not saying that they're not going to have another clinic. It's all really based on availability of the vaccines and the ability to to plan and manage to sheer volume of folks that are, that need to get the vaccination. So we in the county, we work at the discretion of the Virginia Department of Health. We don't have the the say in who gets vaccinations. We don't plan the vaccinations. All we do is relay messages and try to gather information when they, when we're asked for it. We have gone through the steps, all of the career paramedics and intermediates that work for the county, including myself, have taken all the classes that the CDC and VDH require to be able to administer vaccinate the vaccinations in the event that we have the clinics here, and they call on us, we will go and provide assistance with administering the vaccinations to try to get more people through in a shorter period of time. The schools, speaking with Dr. White, I don't want to speak for him, but he did mention to me that they were discussing the school nurses assisting as well. The schools are being handled completely separately from the one B categorization of all the other folks in the tier. Schools are being handled through Holly Balderson with VDH. She is directly communicating with all of the superintendents in the health district to manage all the schools. The schools were cut back tremendously as well. I mean, the whole thing has shifted because of the shortage. And that's, that's the best update that I have for you right now. It literally changed week by week and day by day. They're trying to plan to get a shipment of five hundred thousand you know, vaccines in the state. They have to be split between millions of folks. So just, you know, please be patient. The Department of Health is doing all they can with the small volume that they're getting. And we're, we're preparing to do whatever we have to to help them administer vaccinations.
Do you have a question dealing with that since I've had the first shot? Is there, is there a time limit before you can, it runs out this booster?
No, I don't think so. I I think the actual, you have to wait the twenty eight days before you go back for the second shot, but I don't think there's a before you go back for the second shot, but I don't think there's a, a limit on when you get that. There may be, I would have to, I would have to do some more research to give you an exact answer on that. We've been so buried in trying to get everybody up and running to just get the vaccinations out that I haven't done any follow-up research on that.
So I did hear about that y'all were getting the training, so it's no real plan for you to administer at this point.
No, we're not allowed to hold a clinic and even if we did, we can't get the vaccinations unless the government says, here, King William, you can have the vaccinations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'd like to ask Chief Reeves also, is it, just to give like a general announcement to the public, would it be best, just like you said, for the people, citizens of the county to fill out that CDC form? Like you said, to find out what category they're in and fill out that form or call that number on there to see if they can get put on this, that list? That's probably the best way for them to move forward at this time?
Absolutely. On the county website as well as the fire department website, we, we try to post as often as we can. But the best thing is to save that link to the CDC website under Three Rivers. So it's on the, I'm, I'm sorry, the Virginia Department of Health website, Three Rivers Health District. And that page, the very front page will give you the most up-to-date information on how the Virginia Department of Health in Three Rivers are disseminating the vaccinations.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief Reeves, thank you for all your efforts on this. I don't think anybody's happy with how it's going overall, but I know that the guys at VDH and especially Three Rivers are doing all they can. So all we can do is try to be patient right now, keep doing what we're supposed to be doing, wear your mask, social distance, stay in if you can. And, uh, you know, wait until we get our act together on these vaccines. But I thank you for keeping your finger on the pulse and keeping us aware of what's going on.
Thank you. We'll do what we can to help.
Thank you. Thank you. Travis, can you?
It's not great, Stuart. I can hear you, but it's very choppy.
I just, I just got, okay.
All right, Ms. Tassanary, did you have anything else on 11A? Okay, great. We'll go and go into Board of Supervisors comments. I will just go in the order in which you appear on my screen, which means, Mr. Greenwood, you're up first.
Okay, um, it's like we had quite a few people on the Zoom. I can't tell everybody, but it looks like several, maybe as many as we had in the, in the courtroom, but not sure. I'm still worried that, I don't know for sure if people are being able to get through to public comment period, because like I said, we normally have a lot more people speaking and I don't know if they're just having trouble connecting to the Zoom meeting or not. But anyway, I would encourage people, if you had trouble, if you wanted to talk and you couldn't talk, reach out to either us or the staff to see maybe if there's a problem, because I do find it strange that not many people, actually only Ms. Bancroft was the only one that spoke, but that was one thing. I wanted to thank everybody that did show up today. And, and I just wanted to, this is a personal note from me, that's Stephen Greenwood from District 3 Supervisor. I do endorse Mary Sue Bancroft as the best qualified candidate for the treasurer's position and encourage everyone to go out and vote on next Tuesday, February 2nd. Or if you haven't already done it by mail or however else you do it, thank you very much. And good luck to you, Ms. Bancroft.
Hodges, you're up next.
Who?
Mr. Hodges, beautiful downtown West Point.
Oh, okay. We're ready and I knew who you, you actually cut out on mine. I don't have a whole lot to say. I do support Mary Sue also, even though the criticism I get from the other candidate. The thing is, is do go out and vote, no matter who you vote for. And it's like Stephen said, it's February the 2nd. And I, I, I know I hit it every time, but like Travis said, wear your mask when you're out six feet apart as much as you can. And I know people come right up on you when you're out there, but I just move. That's the only thing I know. I can only control me. But, you know, it is, it's going to be here a while. So we, we've got to protect our own selves. God bless everybody and have a good week.
Mr. Garber?
I just got back on the phone. I've been struggling here all night.
Hey, Stuart.
I'm sorry that I missed part of the meeting and I'm sorry that I'm not on Zoom. But anyway, for the number of people that participated tonight, I greatly appreciate it. I want to, I'm sorry about this echo. My Zoom on my iPad is halfway working. But anyway, everybody stay healthy and, and be careful. And I look forward to when we don't have to do it this way, believe me. And it was good talking to everybody and that's about it.
I'm going to use my moment here to highlight something in our, our board information packet. And it comes from the MP PDC and it has to do with the Go Virginia grant that the PDC was just recently awarded. And it was a joint effort between the PDC, the Virginia Sea Grant at VIMS. And then also the Virginia Peninsula Public Access Authority, the Middle Peninsula Public Access Authority, it's a $6.5 million grant. The reason it's important is because obviously recurrent flooding has become an issue all over coastal Virginia, the coastal United States. And what this grant is going to do is it's going to bring together the forces of private industry, academics, and then also a, a very unique portfolio of publicly available coastal lands to allow some innovation to be taking place in the field of coastal resiliency. And this work is going to be important for cities like Norfolk, Jacksonville, New York City, San Diego. This is going to be important all over the world, wherever you have low-lying coastal, vulnerable land. And that work is going to be taking place in the middle peninsula. It's got the potential to be a very big economic driver. It was a very unique idea that was born out of the MP PDC Commission and Mr. Lawrence, the executive director and delegate Hodges from the General Assembly. I, I think it's something to stay tuned to. It's very good news for our region. And it's, I think it's going to be impactful. So keep your eyes on that.
Mr. Jim, I think you missed one of our supervisors.
Oh, did I?
I think you missed one of our supervisors.
How could you miss him?
Well, it's Stuart's fault because when he was popping.
Oh, yeah.
Thought there were two.
I'm always, always blame me.
I can't see you, so it's your fault. So Ed.
Okay, good, good. I'll, I'll take the blame.
Yes, thank you. Just like to thank everyone for participating this evening. I know it's difficult for some to, to watch and listen, echoes and whatnot. I want to urge everyone to get out, fill out the zoning and subdivision ordinance survey as best you can. Make sure that gets in. This is your, your best chance to get your, your thoughts and ideas down on paper to help the, the commission and planning office figure out how to, to fill these things out and get these things right the next time around. And again, please get out if you haven't done so. I think you can go by the, make an appointment with the voting office till Friday. Otherwise, go to your regular polling places on February 2nd and vote. And I as well endorse Mary Sue Bancroft for treasurer. Good evening, everyone. Stay safe.
I'm not going to take two times. All right, if there is nothing else, and I don't think we have a closed meeting, am I correct?
I don't think so.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, very good. So then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion. I'll second.
Just, there is no discussion, as I point out often. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Muskowski?
Aye. And just as we're leaving, I'll just leave staff with this. Guys, I know y'all are taking a beating on this assessment issue. And I just want you to know that, you know, we have your back. I think y'all are doing a great job, you know, stay the course and, you know, we'll, we'll get through it. But I think you guys have done great work. So, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.